And the next thing on the agenda is to approve the minutes of last meeting. And I thought they were good.
Well, there were a lot of motions that were not who they were. That's the only thing that I saw. So I thought I.
Let's fix it.
Yeah, so number two, Mark motioned to appoint Doug and Chris. And Kayla seconded that. And then, number 10. I made a motion and Kent seconded. And it was, you know, I don't know. Normally, there, and then on the law of part withdrawals. It was me and Kent, or Kent, it was I motioned and then Kent seconded. So anyway, I'll just, yeah, there's, well, you know, I'll correct, I'll send a correction to Justin of these.
Oh, we can do it based on this video.
And also, but so that if she corrects it, um, manually in minutes itself. And then number 12 was Kent and then Chris. So normally, they're not like that, but I'm not sure. And I think whether, because you always repeat it, so.
Right. So I think we need to make sure that the, not only for accuracy, but also for transparency on the public record, that we make sure that this is 100% accurate. And I have one as well, which is item number seven with not specific enough. I believe Justin mentioned a date certain of September 9th as the due date for the engineering report. And I would like that entered into the record so that we can follow up on the engineering report of the N V S Cook Dam. And if there's, if I've gotten that date wrong, then the video will tell us exactly what it is. But if memory serves, it was September 9th is what he specifically identified as the due date that we were expecting an engineering.
So.
So I make a motion that we accept the minutes as amended in this conversation.
Oh, Kent has made a motion and Mark seconded it to amend the minutes as discussed in this. Now, uh, all in favor? Thank you. Next is a department report.
We have no departments.
Step forward.
Friendly, not today.
And then, uh, select board reports.
Wait, maybe you have a department one on? Am I the department head today?
You're the just-in-time department.
Head of your. They took my podium away. Good evening, everybody. I guess it's my turn, right? Unity Night Out, right around the corner. We've got a lot of participants. A lot of new participants coming. Um, we've got new food on the menu this, this year, which is awesome. Uh, thanks to Donna.
You gonna tell us what it is?
No. So you're all welcome. Bring your families. Look forward to seeing everybody. Rose is, I knew hire Rose doing excellent job out there. Um, she has transitioned well. And I appreciate all she's done. Be a good asset to the community. Federal grants, um, just applied for some more federal, federal grants to pick up equipment, needed equipment. That way, we don't have to run it through our C I P next year. And knock on wood, uh, we get those, those grants, those, uh, F Y 23 federal grants that are now opening up. And just got notice today that they're opening up F Y 25. And as soon as that opens up, I'm going to apply for more grants through, through that. And it should be a fairly quick process. Uh, we're looking at. By the time the state puts a notice out to the time it goes to the counties and gets to us, we're going to have a very short, two-week window turnaround time. So, uh, I'm trying to get ahead of that before it comes out in end of August, beginning of September. So, um, we're not really sure what amounts are available yet. They haven't made that known. But we're going to try to get everything we can get, so.
Chief, can I interrupt you for a second?
Absolutely can.
You, you had emailed me about a D O T grant that you had come across your desk.
Yes.
Um, that related to.
Trails.
Trails and sidewalks. I think it was a, there was a potential connection to our sidewalk project downtown. Um, and I brought it up at a meeting, two meetings ago with Justin. And I was hoping for a report back because he made a commitment that he was going to call D O T to see if that was something that we could apply for. So could we, uh, put that in the minutes for this meeting that we're hoping for? A, to circle back on that particular topic from Justin when he is here at the next meeting?
I, I get a lot of, a lot of, um, grant information on a weekly basis. And if it applies to something we're doing around the community, I forward it on to the people who are working on it. Happened to be you.
Thank you, the lucky one. Thank you. No, it was good. And I could understand why it was a potential connection.
Yeah, because it talked about, um, not just sidewalks, but also trails. And with our trail projects we got going, I thought it would line with that. And maybe we could offset some of the money we're spending, uh, with that grant money. It's basically all I have. Um, we're still working. I take that bet. I'm going to keep talking. We're still working through the, the consolidation process. We had a meeting last week, Mark? Last week?
Yep.
Made some, made some good headway. We're getting down to, to dollars and cents. And, um, the old added the devils in the details, working through those details to figure out how this is going to actually work. So I was very optimistic about the last meeting we had and, uh, getting an idea on costs going forward. And how we're going to work those costs out and share those costs. So I guess.
Sixty forty.
What's that?
Is it sixty forty now?
I, my salary is sixty forty. So that's kind of the model that we're looking at. But there's a lot of intricacies involved in that because, uh, let's say heating and electricity and, and stuff for, for the, to run the P D. Should that be split sixty forty? Uh, because we're still going to have to maintain an office space over here. So there are a lot of different things we have to look at, um, moving forward and, and really crunch each set of numbers to come out with an actual number for the end.
I heard our Justin had told me that there's a possibility you'd close the station for police and do something.
Do an office, public office up here so the public can still have access to us.
Looking at redundancies and then also looking at, um, the pluses that Monmouth would gain from it, as well as the co-town managers sitting down and saying, you know, who's going to pay what? Is one going to, you know, kind of run it all through them? And so the town managers kind of have to look at everything, their line item things and Winthrop and our line item things and Monmouth, and then kind of come back to us next time and put together what, how those things kind of line up. So then we think about when we take the two budgets and put them together, is it sixty forty?
Because if you look at just one line item, um, the overtime line, Monmouth overtime line and the Winthrop overtime line, you combine them together. Excuse me, we're talking about 130,000. Well, if we combine, that number will probably reduce quite a bit because now we got more people to draw from and we're not going to need to fill shifts like we have in the past. As many as we've had, especially since Dana's been out, um, created a real quagmire. But, uh, so those are some of the things that we have to work through in, in this process to get to the bottom line numbers so we can take a look at it and say, is this going to be beneficial monetarily wise to the community? And is the, is the community willing to pay that extra for what they're going to get for service, so?
There was an article in the paper today about Wilton J where you went and talked with them, but also, you know, their next meeting. And one of the things they mentioned that in the article today was that they used, um, a model or relied on notes from Pennsylvania where, so I'm sure you've probably seen and looked at.
I forwarded it all.
All that stuff. So it was kind of interesting because, you know, we talked about that, but I read about it.
Yeah, I'd, I'd reached out to all across the nation looking at, uh, models and that was one of, one of the models that closely resembled our situation. And closer models what Jay and Wilton are trying to do. So I for, I had forwarded that information all up to them and, um, even, even the numbers wise, the population wise, the budget wise, it was, it was pretty close to what we're doing.
Livermore wouldn't want to get in on that.
The dynamics are different because they're two different counties. And they'd have to go to two separate court systems and, and that becomes a logistical nightmare. That's it.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, welcome aboard, young lady.
Thank you. He wasn't here last night.
I remember her when she was running.
So on to then select board reports. I've got a couple of things. Um, when I got elected to this position, I was speaking with a, a local resident. And they stressed to me how important it was that our job here is to make sure money is being spent where taxpayers appropriate it to. And that comes down to when the warrant comes out, going through that warrant and looking at stuff and making sure that the payments in there are going where they're supposed to go. And we had one come out a week and a half ago. It had a $780,000 check going somewhere it wasn't supposed to be going.
I think that was corrected.
It was corrected, but it got several signatures of approval.
Yeah.
And then the accountant caught it, um, and made some calls. And so I just want to stress the fact that it's very important for us to be vigilant in, in going over these warrants and making sure that everything is, you know, the two and three hundred dollar stuff sometimes is kind of hard. Well, yeah, that's a, you know, odd, that's hard way. It's probably legitimate, but, um, when the, the thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars of checks start going out, it's, it's important that we're really reviewing this stuff. And, and if you, there's a question on something, bring it in and question it because that's our job.
Was this a payment that was supposed to go to the R S U that didn't go to the R S U?
It was, it was a county tax payment. Supposed to go to. Eight hundred thousand dollars. And, and I.
And where did it go?
Was supposed to, and then it was.
To my house.
K and B, right?
Yep.
And, uh, and I had, of course, I mean, I had a question about it. This can't be. And, uh, but I think I might have signed it.
That explains the big addition.
No, I, I was pretty adamant with the accountant for the town that it's like, you've got to do something to correct this because this is like public record. And I don't want someone digging back saying, I knew these guys were all crooked. It's like, we paid them $780,000. Um, and they told us it was going to be 2,000. So it's important that we really look at this stuff and go over everything. And, um, it's okay to question stuff because that's why we're here.
And that brings up another point to make you all aware is, um, Donna and I have been dealing with, with an overpayment to Dell on, in 211,600 and something dollars. We, we received an email from Dell saying that they have a payment from November of 24 and another payment, exact payment, uh, from, uh, March of 25. And we started digging into it, saying, trying to figure out why there was a double payment. What Donna doesn't know is what we found out today. I've been in touch with our, with Jess, our financial officer. And, um, we're able to determine that it was, uh, a scam. This guy representing himself sent an email to my police chief email address. And ultimately what they wanted is a bank account so they could send the funds back to us. Well, you know, that's not the way a scam works. They want the bank account to get stuff out. So that stuff is out there. And unless you really do the research and do due diligence on it, we can get burned really bad.
Yep. Uh, another, another thing that I think we need to look at moving forward is, I don't know exactly when this came into play. It had to be at least five or six years ago. But we have a, a warrant question every year that asks for authorization from the taxpayers to be able to move 10% from any particular budget to another budget line, as long as the total amount, the total budget doesn't exceed, the grand total. Um, and it's important to have that there because there were just things that come up that you don't know. You need to make a large purchase and you don't have the funds in that thing, but we can pull them from somewhere else. But I think it should be at the discretion of the select board to make that decision. Yeah, we should move these funds. Um, and I don't think that's the case right now.
I think it is.
It is.
Over a certain amount. Yes. Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Because Justin is only.
I'm not sure if that amount is five or 10,000 dollars.
I think it's.
Justin has to ask permission. To expend anything more than five or 10,000 dollars. But we, I certainly, I think, makes sense to be explicit about that.
Yeah. Yep. Because I just want to avoid anything, anything that has these parents that could be shady. We want to avoid that completely. Transparency is key to all of this and.
Well, and I think this is why, um, I, every meeting, I have asked the question, when are we going to see the audit? Every meeting, because that's an auditor's purpose, is to go through and to check every transaction. Well, they don't. They sample transactions. But they check, um, they're supposed to be checking every motion. And I was down at the town beach. We did, uh, we did the cardboard canoe race on the beginning of July. And I spent a little time down at the town beach. Didn't we approve, uh, a bench? For, in, in, in memorial of the Hash families' contributions to the beach program?
Yep.
Okay, where is it?
Well, I think the, the, the rec committee, what was left of it, was supposed to be getting quotes and, and they were supposed to work on that. But I think the rec commission or committee kind of fell apart and.
So it didn't happen?
It didn't happen.
So how come that didn't come up in our audit? Because every motion is supposed to be audited for completion.
Yeah, I don't know. Every motion?
Every motion is supposed to be audited for completion. I'm pretty sure that's part of it. You know what? When the auditor gets here, that will be one of my questions because I'm pretty sure that's part of the process. It's like every motion, they go in and check, did this get done?
I wonder if it takes so long.
Well, it's part of being transparent. That's a big mistake, Mark, and I'm glad that you're bringing it up.
Yeah. And people make mistakes, you know, it's, it's understandable. But that's why we have backups to the, because after several eyes lay on it, we can catch that. I saw it on Wednesday evening when I looked at it and I just shook my head. It's like, I got a gift call in tomorrow and I went to work and it was like 10:30 and finally she called me. She said, so this, you know, this is so-and-so. It's like, is this about a check? And yep, it is. And just probably stop payment on it. It's like, great. Yeah. But we just, we really need to look at that stuff thoroughly. And if there's something on there that looks even remotely like, I don't, I don't really think this is a question in this, come and question it. That's your job. That's what people elected us for. I, I always, first thing I do is sign or make it so it signs and, uh, and then review it.
I look through.
They should put the signature at the end and not at the beginning.
So you're talking about this one right here? You're talking about that?
No. No, this was, this was for Kennebent County tax.
Oh, okay.
It was 780,000, 782,000, and it has not shown up again. So I. I think what, well, the corrected one, it was, it did show up corrected. The one that, the one that corrected, the mistake one, did not have that in there. No, because it went from being an $800,000 warrant to a $150,000 warrant. That, and, and that's, and I've been watching and it still hasn't been. So.
So I must not have looked at the one because I knew she sent one that wasn't correct. And then she sent a second one, like, right, you know? And so I only looked at the second one. I didn't even look at the one that she had canceled. So I didn't even look at that one, so.
So, um, I was pretty intentional about, uh, changing, making a note in the minutes about that September 9 deadline. Um, not because, not just because it's an important issue for me, but also because I got conflicting, uh, reports from uh, secondhand sources that the watershed folks were indicating a later time for due dates on that report. So we need to get to the bottom of exactly what the due date is. And when there's inconsistency, we need to make sure that we have our records in order about who said what, when. We had a meeting of the Trails Committee. Uh, and we're getting to the end of, uh, our grant application for, applying for the funding for this trail that's just over the hill here. And, uh, we inserted some language based on, uh, some of the decisions that we had made as a select board on supporting the maintenance costs of the trail, proposed trail. You know, when, when maintenance costs start to accrue like seven or 10 years. Yeah, using the T I F funding that, um, we now have language for. So that's going to be part of our application is our expression of support as a select board. We're taking on some of that responsibility, uh, when it comes to. There's a lot of, of trail development activity happening behind Chris's house. Uh, up in the, um, uh, in the, the Christmas tree farm.
On the hill?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, so if folks are interested, uh, there's a lot of volunteer activity going on up there where folks are doing, um, you know, trail maintenance and culverts. And, um, there's a small parking area, trail, a couple of different trailheads. And, uh, and the Trails Committee was also very interested in noticing, or in, in noting the, uh, potential behind, uh, some adjustments to our website to make it more accessible when people go to Monmouth's website. When, you know, someone lands on the website, it, it starts with, here are some things to do in Monmouth. And it could be, you know, the, a connection to the snowmobile club or the trails or, you know, a map of all the boat launches or businesses or whatever, but we start there. And then get into.
Sell the attractions.
Yeah, and then get into the mechanics of the year-round people who want to know, what's the ordinance on this, that, and the other thing? You can still get there. You just have to go a couple more clicks in to figure it out. So anyway, Trails Committee was very supportive of that concept.
I, I had noticed, being in and out of the town pit a little bit, um, in the area where they normally push stuff over the bank, there are three or four plastic eight, 10-inch culverts that I'd say they dug out from somewhere. And I'm trying to think, it's like where someone could use those somewhere. So think of that in the trails thing, if there's some places you need, rather than buy them, because they may have dents in them or whatever, but you only, you don't need a 20-foot covert. You might only need eight feet or something.
Right.
You may be able to get some pieces from Tony because they're in the area of where they push stuff over a barrier.
So, yeah, oh, yeah, you could, yeah, you could get them and throw them in the back of a truck where they are. Okay.
But they're in that area where I think they're going to plan just to dispose of them, so.
So, um, uh, that's, that's a good tip. The other, uh, interesting conversation was this application we are making to the state for, uh, this, uh, multi-use trail, this all-person trail down here. It's expensive because there's a lot of material involved. There's $135,000 worth of, uh, three-quarter minus crushed rock involved. And when Justin had mentioned that Tony took some initiative to produce, you know, to have an agreement with some, uh, rock-crushing person, contractor, I'm thinking we might be able to, uh, actually tap into that resource and either reduce the budget or, uh, figure some win-win out of, uh, using local resources rather than having to pay retail for it.
And if you want some rocks right now, just take your wagon or you go main street in the down lane and you can pick up all the rocks you want.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I, I think that may be a little different operation. I think what they're going to make is crushed gravel.
Not, not three-quarter minus?
If you're making three-quarter stone, usually that gets crushed and then gets washed. And I don't think they're going to set up to wash anything or they're just going to make gravel.
Oh, then maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah. They are going to crush rocks, but they're going to pulverize it into small things to make crushed gravel is what they call it. That acts really well. They're not actually going to make crushed stone. That's a whole different process. It requires a wash plant and all that. Because when you buy crushed stone, it's all clean.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a little different process.
Okay. Maybe that was a dead end.
So the better option is your wagon on Main Street.
Would you mind driving over those a little bit to crush them?
Well, no, I won't crush them, but I, I walk up through there. If you give me a wagon, I could probably add to my task every day.
Well, I watered the flowers by today after we had just talked about it. It was a huge one. You could tell it had been thrown up there by the, the stencil shop that was, came out of the street. Because it was, because people go so fast, so they, they kick them up and they come flying.
They had a broken window.
Yes, they did. The museum.
Right, the museum got a broken window.
Yeah.
From flying rocks?
Yeah. They came and fixed it.
Had some near, near hits too. So it rolled ankles. So it's an adventure right now.
Trails Committee get everything figured out with the A T V thing and the state, who had to send in what application? And that, is that all settled now?
No. No. D O T sent it back and it's got to go to inland fisheries got, so Roberta Kemp got an application from inland fisheries that she's filling out now. Has to go to them and then, and then inland fisheries releases it to D O T. So the signs can be cured.
But it's in the works then.
It's in the works.
In the office.
She's got it on her desk. We talked about it this weekend.
I talked to her yesterday about it. So, yeah, it's in the works.
And I think one of those grants that they talked about where parking would be happening, so Chuck had asked me about Comston Park. Which, as we all know, that is the fairgrounds, you know? So if there would be a, a chance to have parking to access the sidewalk, to access the trail. So I gave Chuck, um, we had going to have a meeting in August, I think, for Comston Hall Trustees. I, did you see my email about that? So, I haven't been as responsive, but if you and I are there, we've got quorum. I think Chuck was going to have Chris Bryan or somebody come. I think Chuck was gonna have Chris Bryan or somebody come to tell us about that and because we have to approve whether or not Comston Park is open for that, which I don't see a problem, but as long as it doesn't interfere with Tony getting where he needs to go and anybody else.
We wanna make sure that, I mean, there are certain times of year when uh there's sports activities going on down over the hill, so we didn't want to intrude on the RSU's needs for parking down there.
Yeah.
Uh, so at certain times of year, we were kind of hoping that Comston.
Or flow of parking there.
Would, would be able, be available.
Yeah.
And if we could state that in our application, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I gave Chuck the information when we can have a meeting and just kind of as the trustees go up now.
So I, uh, I, uh, the other select board reports um are just about follow-ups on things that people are probably getting tired of me talking about, um, the audit being one of them. Um, uh, when it is that we might have a, a visit by the new rec director, so we can start to uh get our arms around what the priorities are there. Um, where we stand on the revaluation. Um, another contract that we signed without any late penalties for the, for the uh vendor. That was due, um, I think they were, they initially committed to notifying people of values uh at the beginning, uh, end of June or beginning of July, so I don't know where we stand on that. Um, another is uh where we are with the code enforcement person, are we, are we issuing permits, building permits?
That, that's a problem, and, and I had talked with one of the office people downtown and um the, our, our current code enforcement guy has been out for a couple of weeks, and he's due back next week. And there's a lot of frustrated townspeople.
Of course.
And I asked if, are we at the point where people are just going ahead with projects because they can't get a permit? Um, because if that's the case, this whole reevaluation thing.
Is nonsense, it's a waste of money.
Because that's.
It's two hundred and twenty, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars that we have invested in revaluing the property so that we can have a clean slate on the permitting process and know exactly.
Get in the hole very quickly if we don't find, but, but there's none available, you know, there's, there's a dozen job postings looking for code enforcement people. You can't just shut off, shut off construction, so.
You, you cannot, and uh at some point, the cost benefit uh is gonna weigh in favor of uh using that ten percent clause to uh beef up the funding so that we can afford a, a professional code enforcement person.
Yeah. It wasn't, it wasn't applicant, I heard, and Justin.
Justin said we can't afford it.
Exactly.
Can we afford to, like, throw two hundred and thirty thousand dollars out the window?
I think maybe the guy gave up being a doctor or lawyer to do code enforcement, because that's what he's yeah, it's, it's forty, fifty thousand beyond what we have available for funding, so.
Okay, but, I mean, I'm, I'm all about not paying more than we have to. Uh, the bottom line, though, is how much are we losing by letting people just go build whatever they want to build without any supervision at all?
Right.
And then no uh uh awareness of what the valuation is and what their contribution to the tax base should be.
We've got to come up with a plan uh soon. But we just don't know what the plan is or what the solution's gonna be to the problem.
Right.
I'll make a suggestion, you cannot ask a code enforcement officer to give five hours or ten hours. Either gotta, you either gotta make it a full-time job or you're gonna pay for part-time like you're paying a full-time job. Because they're just not gonna come here for fifteen hours, they're not gonna do it, it's just a waste of their time, they can't get a job done in fifteen hours, they know that. Every code enforcement that's available has come from a full-time position. You're only gonna get a half-retiree, someone like, but I'm not doing it, but anyway, they're they're not, they just can't, they just can't do it, and you know, Wales is getting a hundred dollars an hour, but they're only paying their codes guy a hundred dollars an hour, but they're only there to write a permit. He's at there one hour a week. One hour a week, so talk about being behind the eight ball. That assessor is our assessor who has already lost full control.
And there's no enforcement for any of it.
And there's no making it up, you only find it out when you make, when someone comes in, another person comes in and says, well, that's wrong, because.
Because it is.
There's no finding it. I mean, I got a permit this week that was the wrong name. So that means in the system, it's on a person that's dead, it's still being issued as a permit. Donna still has it as active dead person. There, there's no, no checks and balances, there, we're, so we're already behind. When the revale started, we were behind. She's already lost, um, the, um, hun, you know, since they went to the houses, how long ago was that? Two months, three months?
Two, three months.
You're gone, you've lost all those permits already.
So it's not just permit income, but it's also the valuation, which is the ability to tax these people accurately.
And the violations, how many, you know, you're, you're there, how many times do you hear a chainsaw on Sunday?
Right.
And the paperwork, you know, it's, no, you, I, I'm looking for stuff that should be there, that was issued two years ago, three years ago, should be in the file, you know, it's not there, it's just non-existent. I couldn't even find a map and lot file, that was missing. A map and lot should have a file folder. Not there. That's how bad it is.
Well.
You gotta do, you, you gotta.
You gotta get our arms around this.
You gotta get your arms around this.
This is, this is.
Justin, that, you, you can't offer twenty dollars an hour and anyone's gonna pay.
And it's, it's crucial to a number of things, not, I mean, not just the, you know, the financial transparency of the town, because people need to know that they're paying their fair share and not a penny more. Uh, but it's also crucial to, you know, uh, economic development, like, who is gonna wanna come to a town where you can't get a permit and make an investment? Right?
And they're only gonna go to get a permit so many times and not be able to talk to someone or get something, then.
And then they're gonna go somewhere else, let's get, another place to get their act together.
They're gonna do what they want to do, and then who's there to enforce it?
Well, either that or they'll just pound sand. Right, because if we don't have our act together administratively as a town, then we're not gonna, we're, we're gonna attract, we're gonna, what we will attract are the people who want to grow the, grow our economy in a way that's based on shenanigans as opposed to based on, uh, look, I, I wanna, I wanna do things right here, well, for.
You know, the guy that wants to hear this is not there, and he's not listening either.
Yep. I had to talk with him. Nothing he could do, he said. Application's out, I said, well, you gotta change your application. You can't BS him for fifteen hours, person.
I inquired about if there were any kind of temp services that provide this stuff, and they said, no, because of such a demand, a temp service couldn't get someone that would do the job, because they all have full-time jobs.
Well, maybe you should question the agenda that there's a discussion about changing the qualifications or changing what you're asking, because if you're sitting here with a position that's not filled, you can only sit here with a position that's not filled so long without relooking at what you're offering in terms of requirements for that position. And then restating it and coming together as a group to say, yes, we need to throw thirty hours a week or forty hours a week at this versus fifteen. So I think it needs to become an agenda item that you guys discuss and make the plan.
It seems like in the budget, it's still funded at a thirty-two hour position, a thirty-hour position, I believe, isn't it?
Then, it was, that always has included Ernie, uh, plumbing.
And I said, I don't think we cut, because it was cut back to fifteen hours a week, I don't think we cut anything out of the budget for it.
Oh, but that, that line is covering two people?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's earnings.
So he, he is gonna suggest, so Justin told me he was gonna suggest that the, number one, the permit's gonna issue, you, you have to fill out a third-party person on the permit with their license number, just like you do with a septic system or plumber, plumbing system. And then that new codes officer will not be responsible for any inspections. So only he has to do is write permits and travel the town and find violations. You know, but, you know, that's, that's always tough. You know, that's, you know, I found all my violations on the weekend, Memorial Day, all the holidays, that's when you find a violation. You don't find them on Tuesday afternoon.
Why?
Because everybody's free on Tuesday afternoon. They only start cheating on Friday night, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays, when they know there's nobody looking.
And it's when they've got free time.
And it's when they have.
He can't, he can't.
The do-it-yourselfers are gonna do it themselves. As Loews is open, they can go buy.
Actually, I'm telling you how many.
Somebody's taken.
Breakfast, sorry, Doug, we went to, I had to buy my breakfast, and he's like, hi, I'm going out to see if I can catch violations, so it's like, hi, nice to see ya.
What you have to do if you're gonna keep the town on an even keel.
You, did you take notes on that?
Yes, yep, she did, I, I watched, yeah, I'll write um an email and.
I'm willing to work on any committee you guys put together.
Thank you, thank you. One last question, and this was just uh uh, I'm, on my list of select board reports that you're tired of hearing me talk about, um, the culvert to Jellystone. That had to wait until the end of this.
September.
September, right? Okay. So, right, so um, where are we with asking Leeds and Wayne to make a contribution?
I don't know, we had had that discussion before, I don't know if the inquiry got put in, I know the campground said no.
Yeah.
Campground said no.
I don't know what the town said. I suspect probably the same.
Yeah.
But I don't know.
That's what I had heard, that this is.
Both towns.
Yeah.
That's what, I think I heard too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Your problem.
Yep.
I'd like to hear that on the record.
Justin would probably know, so maybe we can get that two weeks.
Running Board tried to make it a condition in their expansion of Jellystone. We had not, it, then Silencio, we haven't heard anything. They had not come back to redo their application.
Yeah, I think.
So the application is still pending, but not acted on?
I think the other towns put the guywash to them, didn't they, Wayne and?
But they were still planning on doing Monmouth.
Monmouth Park, yep.
That's fine, we're willing, I, I, I mean.
We told them, we're more than willing to approve this, if they have to go. Friendly advice.
It's going to jail, watch.
And the answer was always, oh, we'll push it up the ladder. We never know where that rung is.
Big corporate stuff is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, multinational. I'm all done.
I'm done, are you done?
Are, are you tired?
I was just about taking a nap. Next is a public comment.
I don't know if I've seen this shit last time, I don't know. I'm not seeing any weird names, but.
Well, the only agenda, I'm sure that when the new rec director introduces them thinking, new rec director.
Be this meeting, I mean, I asked if have Rose come so we could see where she looks like, so when I could stop by or something. Well, you know, there are rumors about your speeding habits.
Yeah.
Well, I have to test those speeds when I'm trying.
They talked about, he talked about doing like a day with the what did they call it, when you could come and meet Justin at the town offices?
Yeah, but it's still in the detail.
Yeah, no, but they, they would do it on a, like, the night they're open late or something. Yeah.
She's gonna be a community lineup, she'll be a community, but for the rec director.
Well, I would.
It was also on Facebook and.
Night, uh, national night out?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, but.
It was on Facebook, you know, introducing him and telling him you could go to the rec site and sign up, and you would get notifications from them, so I signed up as like an adult, as a household, and now I'm on an email list for the rec program.
What did, what did you think of the signup process?
It confused me a, a little for a minute, because I thought after I signed up as a household, I'd have to sign up as person, but it tells you, no, you're already signed up, so you don't need, unless I would add mom or something, and I was fine.
So I did, I did the same, and, I mean, I'm kind of, I'm kind of into user interface, oh my god.
It looked annoying, so I didn't even do it. You're anyone who's in my age group, we're gonna look at it and be like, no.
Oh, man.
It was annoying, it wasn't fair.
We need some.
Yeah.
I wanted to ask more about the, the rec, my point is, is that we've had obviously a very strong uh folks have come and gone here over the last several months asking about the beach and all that, and I would have thought where they were waited on, waiting on bated breath, that we would have a little more information tonight about where the beach is at, what this director, have we had more than one lifeguard um applying, all that, because everyone's been on the edge of their seat.
Well, I think there was only one application, and they can't be lifeguards with only one person there, so they're essentially a beach attendant to help monitor, but they're not a lifeguard, because you need two, because you can't. So bathrooms and changing rooms will be open, but they can't, technically, they're not on duty.
Yeah.
Right.
Because you need.
Trying to keep the riffraff, I will keep the punks from swearing and then causing disturbances and.
That's what was neat.
That's what she is doing, and from what I've heard, she's doing a really good job with it.
Yeah.
Excellent, thanks.
Things are going pretty well down there, nobody's drowned, even though there's no lifeguards, no grounding, so, but she's keeping the place uh monitored.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if it's quality of, you know, if the atmosphere is one of family quality, community quality, then people will start to return to it, and I think that's been a problem I've heard from several people, is, you know, the, the swearing and the punks, as you call them, you know, it just, there's been issues and you know, the police can't camp out there and cruise all day long.
Right.
So when they're gone. We have responded down there.
Right.
More this year than we ever have.
Right, right.
So it's.
And, and I suspect as we move into the late summer fall, and we get things going with this rec director and talk about the beach, we're gonna figure out some things that we're gonna make a decision that we can now as a select board, like whether we're letting people from out of town come and all that and stuff.
Yeah.
Winthrop, I just read Winthrop passed a new beach ordinance, and it's very simple, um, but they're restricting it to residents and guests and um, they posted lifeguards are there from this time, and, you know, no pets, and a lot of music and.
No smoking.
Right. And it will be enforced by the police department or the lifeguards, so, and it's really simple, and, but I think definitely, going through the fall, we're gonna work on this stuff and have a, a good plan in place.
Right.
And with the rec committee, that will be able to be established.
Yep. You know, people have asked me about it, I said, they're looking for rec members, go right up and let them know you're interested.
Yep. Hopefully with all the outspoken people we had come in here, we're gonna have a, a nice full rec committee of all these volunteers that want to come in and be a part of the solution.
We hope so. I did have a conversation with him, the new rec director, and uh, he's got some uh good ideas to move this forward, uh, but it's time. You know, he's starting, he's starting late, and by the time he gets up and running and everything in place, the season's gonna be over, so it's really. By the time he gets up and running and everything in place, the season's going to be over, so it's really next year that we got to concentrate on.
That, that's good for public comment.
That was very interesting, public comment.
Next is, uh, to consider an event grant for the fourteenth community night out. National night.
Well, that's the national one, but you had to be a part of that, right, or something?
Spend money to join it.
To do, yeah.
Call yourself.
Yeah, National Night Out, so we're just a community night out, and we don't have to spend.
Uh, I'm pretty sure this came before the Economic Development Committee, and we were in unanimous support of recommending this to the select board.
Uh, I make a motion, we approve the brand, the event grant application for the community night out.
Second.
First motion by Chris, second by Ken, to approve the applica, the event, the application for the fourteenth. Community night out, fourteenth, wow, all those are favor.
I was doing this.
Send the new food, I was pointing.
Both of these.
Can we do a do-over?
We can put her little blurb in here for both of these with the applications. There we go.
Next is to consider a facade grant application for the Theater of Monmouth. We talked about that, too.
We did. The Economic Development Committee considered this facade grant, um, and was in unanimous support in recommending it to the select board.
Their roof, they're redoing the roof and.
A toad home.
Of toad hall.
One of the requirements was, though, by the way, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about this requirement.
Moving along.
No. No, we wanted to know, and maybe someone can help me here in the audience, what is the origin of the name of the building, Toad Hall?
Wind in the Willows, some years ago, there was a children's show there, Theater of the Camp, and. They, and Mrs. Soul, Richard Soul, the founder of the Theater of Monmouth, actually purchased the house. In support of her son's activity of, you know, operating, creating the theater, and so she bought the house so that it could be used to house actors and then administrative. Offices and all that. And so one year, there was one in the Willows, and about the time, I think it was purchased, they said, Toad, let's call it Toad Hall.
And I saw that production, it was amazing. It was wonderful. I think we have pictures of us with the actors, because they used to stay in costume and come out and greet the kids. Out in the parking lot after the.
Used to stand on the roof of the concession stand sometimes and.
Oh, yeah.
You know, orations, I don't, yeah, it's cool, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So I make a motion, we approve the facade grant application for Theater of Monmouth.
I'll second that.
I gave them a one move.
They did.
Well, they filed it more.
They've mowed it once, but whether they mowed it or they hired somebody, because I think last year they hired somebody.
So there's a motion like that, and a second by Chris.
I go there and do it.
I'm, I'm game. We're the friendly amendment to mow the lawn.
Yeah, maybe we'll have to swap off, Ken.
No, they, they doesn't have people doing it.
Exactly. Maybe I need to go out and show them how to use a lawn.
I get it, I don't know. My sister does it, or my dad, or my papa.
I am.
I'm sore.
Right, that's downtown. Anyway, you know, it's suburban.
Now, we'll do it for a fee, we got cemetery mowers across.
We're out of control, but.
Yeah, we'll go.
So, uh, there's a motion by Ken, second by Chris, who've, uh, approved the facade grant application for Theater of Monmouth, all those in favor.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, with the condition that I'm calling along.
All those ways.
I'll hold the one.
Lost complete control.
Next is a, uh, the warrant for, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
So the warrant for July third, which is twenty-three, we have, um. Spending shares over a thousand dollars of gas to fuel, two thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-two cents, Blue Rock Earthworks. Uh, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars, DJ's municipal supply, signage, gloves. Things for public works supplies, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, fifty-nine cents, Dennis K. Burke for fuel. Um, one thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-one cents, Ken Donahue painting, um, in the town office. One thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. G and E roofing, uh, repairs, annual service repairs for the public works building, one thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars, forty-six cents. Grimble Industries for demo waste, five thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents. I work, uh, which is the code enforcement software licenses, six thousand five hundred dollars. K and B Builders, front porch repairs and man lift rental for, I believe, must be.
extension on the tower.
Oh, yeah, Comston Hall, five thousand two hundred dollars, main equalization consultants, uh, July assessing. Two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, fifty cents, main waste to energy tipping fees, thirty-four thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty cents. Monmouth Water Association, this is quarterly usage for all of. The town, so, well, the, the hydrants, so this is actually just for the hydrants. Um, thirty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety cents. Northeast Firearms, the FEMA grant reimbursement for thermal cameras for the police department, five thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Um, Bureau of Motor Vehicles, fifteen thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars and six cents, and that is a grand total of. One hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and seven cents. Do you want to do them both together?
Sure.
Okay.
And that is the replacement, um, warrant in lieu of the one that was, had, I think, got it.
Yeah. So this is, uh, July seventeenth, warrant number twenty-four, Andersgoggin Bank, these are, uh, loan principles and interest, this is debt service. Fourteen thousand thirty-six dollars and sixty cents, um, again, Andersgoggin Bank for debt service, sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. Annabek, Besse Cook Lake Improvement Association for boat inspections and plant control, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Axon Enterprise, this is body cameras, grant reimbursement, fifteen hundred dollars. Baker Electric for, uh, building repairs at the transfer station, one thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and ten cents. Blue Rock Earthworks for materials transport, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars. Capital One Public Funding, this is the fire department pumper, lease, uh, principal and interest. One hundred and seven thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars and five cents, CMP. Four thousand one hundred and six dollars and thirty-two cents, that's all of the town departments together. Obviously watershed, uh, fiscal year twenty-six, first assessment, twenty thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. Ken Donahue painting, um, at the town office, one thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. G and E Roofing, this is, um, the municipal, this is the town office, uh, building. Service agreement, one thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Kennebec Valley Council of Governments, seven thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars, that's the annual membership fee. Um, Lynn Spring Service, this is for public works, um, replacing, uh, parts on one of the trucks. Two thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-four cents, Main Municipal Association, this is property and casualty insurance. Still your twenty-six, fifty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, Main Municipal, this is unemployment insurance, one thousand sixty dollars and fifty cents. Main Technology Group, uh, this is the IT support folks, three thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. On the sanitary district, this is all of the town sanitary district bills, one thousand seven hundred and five dollars. Work Auto Group, this is the, um, Board Explorer with MMA proceeds, twenty-five thousand dollars as part of this. Forty-six thousand five hundred and fifty, forty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-five dollars. The DM, Bureau of Motor Vehicles, nineteen thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-five cents. And inland fisheries and wildlife, nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. New Line, uh, Comston Hall, the umbrellas and bases and shelving, one thousand five hundred and ten dollars and fifty-one cents. Vision Government Solutions, this is the assessing database, software and hosting, twelve thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars. William Van Tynen, the CMP update of their valuation, one thousand three hundred dollars for a total of three hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents.
The painting contractor for both of these warrants, I think, two.
Two separate parts of their, yes, one of them is.
They're not duplicate.
Nope, um, one is the assessor's office and the main office, and then the other one for Ken is the conference room, so. Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four warrants, number twenty-three and warrant number twenty-four.
I'll second that.
So is the motion by Ken, a second by Chris, to approve warrants, uh, twenty-three and twenty-four for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, all of those are favor.
Before we adjourn, uh, Mr. Chair, I wonder if we could also add to our list of requests from the town manager. Uh, now that we have unaudited but a closed fiscal year, if we could have a financial report at the end of year.
You want year to date?
Oh, we close the fiscal year at the end of June, now?
Yep.
So.
So you want twenty-four, twenty-five, that, year to date. Quarter four.
Okay.
Fiscal year of this class. Anything else to add to the notes?
I make a motion, we adjourn.